Not to make clock.
It's a blessing. Seven minutes more, maybe five to seven minutes. I'd have been there. Is there a call?
He's unlocking the doors.
I shouldn't do that.
Okay, so that's not big.
No, man, no, it's Stephen is adjusting that thing back there.
Anything.
We try to adjust.
Did you get down to Moore Street?
We figured out a way to get.
It was nice.
Oh, I did a nice job.
I got there early. And did the dentist, do you know if the dentist ever got there?
I think I left right about two and I'm not 100% sure.
Did they ever get?
Ladies and gentlemen, we are live.
Well, okay, everybody, we're live. How do you do, Commissioner Teresa? Good to see you today. Hey, you guys, I got a secret to show you about how to fold. If you want to see it easily. Because these, when you do, you have to fold it back at the center. Yeah, Stephen needs to adjust it back. Fold it, fold it back on itself at the center and then in. And then you can do like that and you don't have to. Because you'll see that the way those are folded to get to see anything. That one might be better.
This one's bad.
This one's better. This one's done right. But the other one, this one, no. So Tom, are you gonna, you'll send us some alternate days?
I found one.
This was a heck of a packet to.
As soon as possible because I got kind of like a text every morning.
Wake up call.
Right. Okay, shall we wait?
Yep, that's better.
Do you want me to simply ask my question here before we set the agenda? Remember, I said I had that question.
You can do it there or you can do it go down the road either way.
Okay.
Fair times.
Right, okay. Okay. We've got it here. Awesome. Please.
Not big.
Okay.
So I walk to your side, it's getting warm.
Statewide budget.
Let me ask you.
I'm not getting stuff together later.
I gotta ask Cheryl something.
I had a city budget, not the American budget. Was it God, none of them helped me? Helped me.
Our UDO does not allow for alcohol or conservation development in townhomes.
You've got my email.
Because I was just noticing with the amount of townhomes that are on that map. Every share plus what's in this package this week is close to 1,000 townhomes. All to that any type of the conservation development you guys put into the UDO for some.
Change the thing about.
Might be something to think about.
All of a sudden starts showing.
I don't know if that was deliberate. I was just noticing.
Okay, I think we're ready to roll. Sorry. Good afternoon, everyone. It is good to see you today. It is 5:32 PM and I'm calling to order the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners Agenda Meeting. Today is Monday, June 6th, and as I said, excuse me, it's 5:32 PM. And we are assembled here in the Commissioners Boardroom of City Hall. Please, if you have electronic devices, cell phones and so on, turn them off or mute them. And we are here to set the agenda for next week's Tuesday, June 14th, 2022 regular session. I do have an item that our, as Steve Clerk said, I could not have to add to the agenda ahead of time, but to ask you for your consideration that we make a motion to add it and then discuss it and see what you have to say. And that is that the City of Creedmore and the town of Buckner, as many of you know, do fireworks the Friday before July 4th. They sent us a letter. We have always sponsored that event to the tune of $500 and they sent a letter requesting would we increase it to 1,000 because their costs have gone up about $6,000 this year. And so I'm wondering, one, if you would consider adding it to the agenda now for your consideration? And then, two, if you would consider that? So I could let them know.
Motion to add it.
Okay. Got a motion? Any discussion on that motion? Okay, that item stands added to the agenda. And so you've heard the explanation and so it's just up to you all to decide whether or not you would like to increase that allocation from the City of Oxford from 500 to 1,000 dollars. And they do list us as a sponsor, but of course they list us as a sponsor for the lower amount as well.
I can't see any reason not. Everything else is going up.
So does that mean you make a motion to increase it to?
I make a motion to increase it to 1,000.
Okay, is there any discussion on that motion? Yes, sir.
Does that mean that it will stay at that amount? Or is this just a special year where the costs have gone up? And their amount?
I think that's a good question. I don't have the answer to that. But of course, it is the purview of this board to make that decision. You know, if you wanted to say this is a one-time thing, certainly you could do that. Call it in the middle and say we're going to go to 750, but we have, we do have a motion for 1,000. So I don't, I apologize that I didn't ask that question. So I can't say.
I see very few calls coming down. Not that I know yea or nay on Commissioner Bridges' question, but I would suspect it's going to probably stay at that level.
Or they would hope to anyway. Yes, ma'am.
Where in the budget is the $500 or where was it? I mean, I missed that.
I think we pull it out of community things and there's been money. But Mr. Thornton, would you like to comment on that?
Mr. Ung, not be able to be a better resource for that from where it's been taken from in the past.
So because of the zero budget in a year during COVID and all that we didn't have in the past, there was no mention of it being on this year's budget?
No, previous year.
We didn't have it. So it has been a non-issue.
That's why I don't know about it. Good, okay, I'm good, I'm good.
Yes.
In previous years, we've taken it from import relations, the government budget. That's where we've always taken it from.
And it's good relations. I mean, not that we're opposing it or anything, but I was just curious, I'm sorry.
No, there's no need to apologize for asking a question. The same for Commissioner Bridges. Everything's valid.
I hope it's the same for me because I certainly wasn't saying I disagree with it. But you know, we've done quite a few big payments to stuff. And I'm just curious, is this just a one-time thing? Or do we stay at 1,000 going forward? You know, if we do, I guess.
What would be your preference?
I think that's personally. You know, I mean. That's just my point.
It's a wonderful show. It's, I've gone for many, many, many years. And it's really, really a major community outing. I mean, a lot of people are from Oxford. I mean, I don't know everybody's mailing address, but I've been here 28 years and I've gone probably 15 to 20 of those years pretty consistently. So.
So have I. And I've taken my brain, children, and children.
So it benefits the whole community.
Yes, sir.
Is this something like when it comes up next year, will we address it again? Only coming forward to us right now because of the increase?
Right, it was coming to us because of the increase. We can certainly address it again. And we can also, like you know, Commissioner Bridges is saying, is it kind of a hefty increase? If you feel better splitting it in the middle or picking another number?
I think we just would condition it. So next year, we'll have to look at it again as well. Just so we're not on the hook for $1,000 every year.
Yeah, excuse me. Any, anything else?
We'll proud to the two years. Were, we've, did Oxford participate in this?
Yes, we participated at the $500 level.
Okay, so where did that money come from then?
That's what the city clerk was saying came from the community relations, the staffing community relations. So there was enough money in that budget that there was always room to appropriate it. I thought we split it at 750. So it shows kind of a good, no, you don't feel good about that. Okay, I'm not going to tell you to take, change your motion. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of raising the amount to $1,000 with the condition, as I hear from both Commissioner Lumpkins and Commissioner Bridges, that it be revisited next year? Signal show by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'm curious. I'll let them know. You're generous of you and thank you very much. And with that, we move to the rest of our agenda. And so we have the standard openings. And then we go down to the Morgan Rent Employee of the Month and the June Yard of the Month and Hock Ung's financial discussion. Any questions on any of that? Okay, then we go forward to hear the public hearing, to hold the public hearing, to receive citizen input regarding the fiscal year 2022, '23 budget. Does anybody have any questions on this item? Okay. Then we go down to item C, which is to hold a public hearing to receive citizen input on adopting the. Oh, well, I'm sorry. I assumed that that was, I'm used to that being A and then you ask B. You're right, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right. It's my fault. Item B, consider adopting the budget. Item C, a public hearing to receive citizen input on adopting the guidelines and application processes for murals in the UDO, which I think is pretty exciting. Does anybody have any questions on that? And I just had one. It's more like a common inquiry because, you know, we're also starting to do public art and so on downtown. Do you all have any interest in that maybe also starting the process to explore doing a broader policy that fits for public art? So that since we are, you know, I think. To expand the locations downtown. And is there an interest in having the manager and staff and anybody else who's interested start looking for options to expand beyond murals to how we, how we look at public art and soliciting it and so on?
Where did we end up with the expansion of the public art for this coming year?
DOE DC is handling that right now.
There was a, I was unable to make their meeting last week due to a scheduling conflict. But the notes I got back from the meeting that that was the plan that Stephen had originally proposed. It seems like 100 years ago now, but back in, back in late winter. That footprint was reduced. That's about all I got out of that note. I was just curious what that, do you have any idea what that looks like now? Or is it just kind of status quo? Or is it in Pierre's Court and the rest of the boards court?
Basically in their court. Stephen may be able to expand a little bit on it. But I was in attendance last week at the DOE DC's board meeting. And what they are desirous of doing is, of course, utilizing the existing locations for display of public art that have already had the concrete basins installed and potentially works of art that may be by local artists. So they have developed an RFP that has been sent out. I think that it's due by the end of July, I want to say. Maybe June, I can't recall which. But there was some information disseminated. Detailed a lot of that. So they're going to, I think, have their design and promotions committee reviewing those submittals and working towards selections as far as the public art, which all dovetails just quite nicely back to what the. Considering and discussing. She and I've had this conversation more than once and I've already taken the initiative to gather a few other public art policies from a few other municipalities that have taken that leap of faith and would strongly recommend that we develop our own public art policy. Like that old Superior Court judge said one time, he doesn't have a definition for pornography, but he knows it when he sees it. And you need to be able to define it in large, larger terms because I envision, you know, with the growth of Oxford, you're going to have different people wanting different things. And a lot of it, you know, is focused on downtown. But as we grow, there'll be other areas for the opportunity to have public art displayed. And public art comes in more forms than just murals or displays on downtown storefront windows or other things. And we need to be prepared for that before we have jerk reactions. We need to have our policies put in place. So going back to the mayor's request, we would encourage. Guards to prepare you something, a proposal as far as a potential or a draft public art policy for the City of Oxford to get that to you. It would probably be an assignment for one of your subcommittees, be it the planning committee or, you know, one of those, and kind of take that from there. But going back to the Art Walk, I think that they would like to potentially expand it. So there was a conversation about where those locations would be and, you know, how much it costs and all those kinds of things. So it's still a bit in the developmental phases, but they're.
The original overarching plan was to have it tie into other things that may eventually happen in downtown. So I'm certainly in support of that and would certainly motion to adopt a, or consider adopting a plan.
And I don't even know if we need a motion at this point, but just a kind of a consensus carry on. And I would add to that, and this is something that came up when we were, and Commissioner Bullock was on that group and Commissioner Tocqueville, when we were working on the UDO, there are great guidelines in the UDO for downtown store windows. And that you have to be able to have something you can look at. And so, you know, we have a number of windows that are either blacked out or have curtains in front of them. And I think in Wake Forest, but the thing with the UDO is it's for. And I think our plan was that if we did an additional policy or ordinance that said this is what we want for the downtown, it's a little bit easier to be enforced. So, and that creates scenery for people that are. Downtown. Wake Forest has a great one. Like the manager said, just looking at what other people do. But I would like, is it unreasonable or is it reasonable to suggest that along with downtown art, we can also be looking at strengthening our guidance for storefront windows in the central business core? So that we can proceed in that vein as well?
I think that if that is a desire, that that can be a component of the discussion of the subcommittee or the committee that this gets assigned to and what they recommend that the board consider.
Great. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Murals on the sides of buildings or are we just talking about windows? But I mean.
On sides of buildings.
On side of buildings.
Yes, sir.
That's the policy that's in here right now.
That's the proposal. What's in there is kind of, I believe, from the planning board. If Cheryl doesn't correct me, I'll make that statement. Their recommendations because one who's desirous of installing a mural. And when I heard that, you know, it just kind of immediately clicked a few cells upstairs that, you know, we need something more comprehensive rather than something that deals exclusively with murals. And when we get to the conversation about murals for the board to take it up, I've got a few comments. And I'll say.
Who pays for the murals to be painted on the side of the building? The owner of the building or does the city?
The DOE DC encourages murals as part of its facade grant opportunity. So it's as much as 50/50 depending upon how much the installation of the mural is. So there's an option for some funding provided. But at the discretion really of the owner who desires to have that mural placed on the side of their building. What we really need to be looking at, of course, is the content. How's it going to look? What, you know, it's, people are going to see it. How's it going to represent the city? All of those questions in concern. Our policy or a murals policy.
So a person could pay for it on their own and require no input? Or they could apply for a facade grant and present that to the DOE DC board? That that application goes through and then they evaluate that and determine whether or not.
So if the owner wanted to have a mural painted on their, on their building, they could paint a picture of many things without approval?
Well, Cheryl, how is that handled now? Somebody wants to put up and install a mural, is it at their discretion? Or we, it falls under our side ordinance?
Well, the side ordinance deals salad. Usually someone is salad.
Probably the largest reason why we need to be considering how we wish to regulate that a little bit for obvious reasons that I.
Yeah, I could just see a lot of issues arising. Because, you know, murals sometimes can be very political. You know?
That's exactly the.
And, you know, how do you balance that?
Well, I've seen municipalities have to deal with something after the fact. You know, after something happens or there's been some kind of dispute with a store owner or something and they get mad at the city and decide to paint the whole wall pink or something and that kind of thing. And then the city has to react and. So if you do it now in advance, everybody knows the rules that you have to play by. And you're more proactive than reacting.
Okay, so we have general consensus that the manager and staff can proceed forward looking at a broader policy, which doesn't negate our considering the mural policy in next week. And then the role in of looking at downtown windows in that as well. Good with that? Wonderful. Thank you very much for that. There we go. Item. Guidelines and application processes for murals in UDO. Okay. Item E, public hearing to hear citizen input to approve the modification of the previously approved planned unit development, which is known as Hatcher's or Hatcher Creek?
It's Hatcher.
It is Hatcher without the apostrophe S. That's what I was thinking. Okay. So does anybody have any questions about the modification to Hatcher Creek?
I didn't know there was a Hatcher Creek.
Okay, then we move to item F, which is the editor approving the modified application to include self-storage units. So that goes right with E. And then onto city business, consider awarding the fiscal years 2022, '23 audit contract to Winston William Creach Evans and Company in an amount not to exceed $40,450. And so I did, which I sent my request to the manager earlier today and we answered everybody, which was, so my question A, so we got the last five years of prices or costs for Winston Williams, Creach Evans and Company going 2022 and back. So does the 2022 reference, is that actually, what year is that? Because we're in the 2022 year now, so I was confused.
They will be auditing this fiscal year that we're currently in.
So.
It's always a year behind.
So the 20, what says on what the numbers that Hock sent me that says 2022, that was. That, so the 2021 fiscal year records that they are auditing, that costs us $36,000 and change. Okay. Okay, so I apologize for being up to's. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that. And so city manager, you're okay with an increase of over $4,000?
Well, I'm never okay with an increase of $4,000. What are you going to do? And the answer I gave you, and I can expound on that, is there are some additional auditing duties and requirements that the state has put on municipal governmental audit services. The other part of the twofold answer is there's fewer and fewer of them doing it. So their services are now more and more in demand, so they can charge more, quite frankly.
Okay, so then last question. I have no intention of trying to rock the boat right now, but I know several years ago you did put out an RFP that was broader than our immediate community. So. A lot lower. So I'm just, my question is, do you have any interest in doing that at any point again?
Well, I don't have an interest in doing it unless this board has an expressed interest in potentially going that route. In doing that and preparing that R F P, of course, it was additional work and, you know, we made the recommendation to switch and the board said, no, we want to keep it local. So if the intention is to keep it local and stay local, then
Here we are.
more work for us to perform potentially unnecessarily. But if you have a desire to actually do that and potentially switch, we'll be glad to go through that process yet again.
Okay.
You know, I just have one comment. I think that if there is no competition, then kind of a sitting duck, you know? I mean, I mean, I need four thousand or so more dollars this year, but, you know, have nothing to really compare by. You know, the country we live in, competition oftentimes results in, you know, more reasonable fees. I remember when we were talking, looking at and, I don't know, I, if folks don't feel else, they'll, and I don't care if they're, I mean, I do care that they're local, but necessarily, they get right.
I don't disagree with you, but over the years it's become, as it has become more specialized, fewer and fewer CPAs have continued it and continued with their certifications to perform governmental accounting. And that's a big part of it. There are just fewer and fewer firms now doing it and having auditors that actually have the certification level to specialize in doing that. And a lot of that is because of all the additional G A S B requirements that the state has placed on, you know, those auditing firms and local governments that are required. It just requires a lot of additional specialized training for those auditors. And most of, a lot of them, the smaller ones are just going, yeah, we're not doing that anymore. You know, we can make to perform governmental auditing. So you pay for it now, basically. I mean, I believe you're correct that competition does create an environment in which you have a bit more competitive pricing. But I don't have an answer for you.
So it's not unusual to have a four thousand dollar increase? That's not
Necessarily, depending upon the level of additional work that they may have to perform. Believe than I can, after Commissioner Bullock's question gets answered.
That was the point I wanted to get to. It would help me to understand, without going into all the details, what are some of those additional requirements?
We receive grants that exceeds and it has to be yellow book. We're locally, it's paid and also report to the federal for their grant. And it is so strict as to how we split the grant. Uniform guidance, it'd be put out for kids and others, they have to sign off and everything has to be to their standard and order they clean out at the end of the year.
When you say their standard, you mean the state?
The federal.
The federal?
Yeah. So it's almost like double the work that the auditors are having to perform. L G C puts out a spreadsheet of unit and so they know exactly how much they should get according to the amount of money that we receive. How much they have to do. Just for an example, we've done, have you been to Oxford Hospital? All of a sudden the auditor says, we're not doing it. So there for the independent auditors. There's things that work for auditors. They can choose who they want to get there. So the pricing here, it may seem like if they jump for us four thousand dollars, however, that is in line with and what I've observed, what I've seen, that is very much aligned.
So what I'm hearing is in addition to additional requirements, it's also the inflation factor from year to year.
If you look at the last year's audit, the book that I passed you'll see some of the in the requirements that they had to report to the federal. That's a huge chapter that they also have to perform.
So, oh, yes, sir.
I have a question. So if we did, you know, reach out to other firms to get quotes, is there a chance that this contract could be left with nothing?
I was actually not even thinking about altering the approach here. I guess I was kind of thinking about going forward to see if the manager and the board had that interest of out there, because it seems like we're pretty far along in the, in the process. And so that was just my thinking was to just find out where this fit in the manager's perspective. And happy very much to hear from Mr. Ungs and maybe think formally, if you were going to entertain putting out an R F P.
Probably a couple of months ago. For the next year, April, May.
So, so I guess what, what I was thinking, and of course, what this board is interested in doing is completely up to you. I was kind of thinking of not upsetting the apple cart right now.
Yeah, auditing typically begins around the August time period is when they start performing work. So.
But, but rather kind of putting it out there and then letting the manager mull it over and, and if you are good proceeding ahead.
Um, I'll stick it in my memory bank and we'll have this conversation again come next March, April if we wish to pursue R F Ps for auditing services for the upcoming year. So I think part of this proposal they give it there, I'll give you a price for the second year. So if you choose to go with Winston William Creach and whoever, make it for the one year. Just specify that in your motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. And I wasn't advocating for one thing or another, just that I remembered the process before and this number seemed quite a bit higher than what we had previously talked about. But I would also say for the past five years, it was very stable. And what Mr. Ung sent us was helpful. Thank you. Okay. Item B, Consider College Street, Central College and Professional Park. The owner of this two point one seven acre tract is requesting to subdivide the property. The zoned office institutional property will meet all minimum lot requirements. And we were supposed to have a map. I believe that what was sent to us said there, we would get a map with Okay. So beyond my question about the map, does anybody have any other questions? I believe this is the property right next to Ramble House System. Okay. Thank you. Okay. We move to item C, Consider Calling for a Rezoning Request from Certain Drive. July 12th, 2022, Regular Board Meeting. So they are rezoning forty two acres approximately off of Providence Road from R A to light industrial to expand the facility. The total change involves sixty two or so acres, which forty two is in the city. Twenty are in the counties. So does anybody have any questions on this item? Okay. Item D, Improving a Major Subdivision Platform Vickers Assemblage for the Property Located Off the Outer Loop and Backing Up to the Edgewood Drive Subdivision. Planning Board reviewed this request in January and the proposed development was reviewed by the cities. Thank you. N C D O T and McGill Associates for the Traffic Impact Assessment. And there have been some meetings discussing cost sharing, because a lot of developments are coming out that area. And there's a recommendation for approval of the subdivision. Does anybody have any questions?
One question. So I'm assuming that all parties have agreed to the cost share. I'm just making that assumption based on my readings of everything. Okay. That was my only question.
That's correct. We don't have that policy in place. We're working on getting it there. We are working with various developers and trying to implement
Awesome.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Call for public hearing to be held on July 12th for the Regular Board Meeting Regarding a Conditional Rezoning of fifty two plus or minus acres from Residential Agriculture to G R ten. General residential dwelling units per acre for property located on the outer loop. And this is for the Creach property, two hundred and thirty three town home. So right now we're just looking at a public hearing and they're proposing to limit the density to just under four and a half units per acre. Does anybody have any questions on this item? Okay. And I'm going to just ask one, which isn't, is just prompted by this item and I've brought it up in the past, but I feel with the number of requests coming through, is it possible to ask that we look at adapting our U D O to allow townhomes in conservation development districts? Because we have a method that would increase, allow increased density. But I don't know if it was Vickers Assemblage or somebody else that said, well, we asked for G R ten. Or maybe it was this folks.
It wasn't even one of those. It was the new one of Goshen Road and his answer to
Right. But there was somebody before him that said, and I can't remember if it was this or somebody else, but the answer, it was that seventy six acres, I think. But the answer was, you don't allow townhomes in anything less than G R ten. But then they're coming back with a proposal to limit. And I just wonder if we could consider adjusting our U D O. We allow increased density in conservation development in exchange for keeping a much broader expanse of the property green and open, either as developed recreational or unimproved open space. And it seems to me we're not giving ourselves full advantage of getting some developers to do that if we don't clearly state in the U D O that we allow townhomes in that kind of development. You know, Ms. Hart, do you have a comment?
Not at this time. I'm gonna be honest with you. I've just been focused on what's been asked.
Right. And I'm
So I really don't have any comments.
Okay. Thornton, do you have any? It just seems like we, we could, by doing that, offer developers an opportunity to put town something besides G R ten. Keep a lot of green space. So it seems like it's just something that we missed when, in the wording of the U D O.
I continue per se as to what's preferential or preferred development. But what I will say is more of an administrative response that if that is something that this board would prefer to see with the development that's being proposed for the City of Oxford, then you certainly have the ability to seek that as a request for a review of what you're seeking to go before the planning board and have the planning board
On, on doing that.
On a revision to the U D O. Because your U D O is your development bible.
Right.
And that's what you have in place now that developers go by and utilize when they are looking at a piece of property and what would work best for them. So anything that needs to be changed or revised or amended to reflect a, not necessarily a new way of looking at town since we haven't had any, you know, different potential perspectives, I guess is probably a better phrasing of words than something that, you know, needs through a process of planning board review and recommendation, all of that. So if that's what you choose to do and want to do, I would recommend you make that charge sooner than later.
Right.
In the pipeline.
Right. Yes, sir. We've got two. So Commissioner Reese and then Commissioner Con.
Really asking is we're looking at townhomes coming and they're using all of the space because they can for townhomes. And you're hoping to have more green space in these developments versus
So we have a type U D O that is called the Conservation Development. So instead of doing the cookie cutter environment, and I may have it inverted, but in essence, in exchange for higher density. So let's say you want to develop an area that is currently zoned as G R five.
If I can interject, really, if we think about the project out on Landis Road.
Right.
It came in as a G R ten west.
That's the one.
And after some questions were raised in regards to that.
Ten units per acre.
That's correct. They came, they withdrew that request and came back with a conservation rezoning request. And ultimately what it did was allow for the development to be more clustered, i.e. higher density per acreage. The conservation requirement in the U D O, Cheryl, correct me if I'm wrong, it's like fifty one percent, something along
It's actually fifty five, twenty five percent improved and thirty percent open space.
Right. But you get the
More density.
The developer, you know, essentially gets potentially a bigger bang for their buck because they're having to build less roads, less infrastructure, i.e. extension of water and sewer by the cluster.
If I can add one point, so if it's a G R five, if it's a G R three, but you do conservation development, you can actually increase the density. It's already in the U D O to G R five. You can increase the density to a G R seven. So in essence, it's almost hard to do it without allowing townhomes. But there is somewhere else in the U D O. So it's like we offer this. We don't make it clear that they can do it because elsewhere in the U D O, it says townhomes are only allowed at G R ten. But if we altered that, then what is allowed by the G R five, by, by the conservation development would then, they could look at it and go, oh, we want G R five. We're going to give you all this green space and
G R seven, taking advantage of it in exchange for the green space.
That's purely presentation of the community or green space in the community and it's to our benefit.
Yes, Brad?
No, no, I was gonna answer, I was gonna answer a little bit better.
Oh, okay, okay.
So think of it like this, I can go and plow a field over and slant a bunch of homes and not do conservation. Or I can plow a smaller portion of said field, but still keep density. But I'm keeping green space, trees, other things, possible greenways, other elements would be, could be added to that. So it's conserving some of the land there as opposed to stripping all the land and then putting homes on top of it for the entirety of the zone space. Does that track? Does that make sense?
Well, that's where I started though. I mean, so the answer to my question then was, it's apparent that it's.
Sure it is.
Preserving some of that rural feel.
If, you know, vision for how you want your community to look, then that's a tool in your toolbox to help create that look. So.
So you put them in there tighter, surround them with the green, the greenery.
Starting with construction yet, but the development out on ninety-six South has and you can kind of see what they have done. It's pretty much. And, you know, the conservation district would be conceptually different than that because there are areas that they would not be allowed to touch, per se, to create that required green space.
So that it's, it seems to me, I didn't think anything of it until that property that Mr. Thornton mentioned. And they said, well, we didn't, I said, why aren't you applying for the conservation one? And they said, we can only put town homes in a GR ten. So they're doing all these conditional use requests saying we'll voluntarily limit the number. But if we just alter the language in the UDO to say that town homes are allowed, because how else, I don't even see how you could conceivably get the added density that a conservation development allows through taking fifty-five percent of the property and keeping it green. that a conservation development allows through taking fifty-five percent of the property and keeping it green.